Welcome everyone. Work session tonight, you have your agenda before you. I'm gonna move through it pretty quickly because we have a lot of agenda. We'll open court as usual. There's some questions whether or not we'll be in the courthouse or not, but we'll let you know is that as we go forward, it may not be this month, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. I think there's a free on issue at this point. The Surf Pro was came in and did a great job of cleaning it up. And so we're, we're awfully close to being back in there, but right now we'll probably be meeting here. We'll have the invocation place of the flag roll call. Anybody let me know if I'm going too fast. We'll do the approval of minutes as usual announcements. Do want to make the court aware that Thomas Harper is retired from the planning commission. We'll have any amendments to the agenda that we need to approve citizen response. County mayor's report, I do want to make the court aware of one issue. After Sheriff Russell and I have done an exhaustive study of land purchases. Looking to land across the street from the jail and some other options. We signed an option to purchase today. Holder's Tobacco Warehouse and all the land that that's a part of that warehouse. It's, uh, this is simply an, an option, which means we'll do it and have to do an environmental study. Our architect will have to look at especially the new part of the building as to how we can attach the jail to that. You're all aware that the three acres on the left-hand side of Marlene Street is a part of that property. And after we've done the environmental study and have an engineer to come in to evaluate the building itself. Then we'll, and find out more about it and find out what the cost of the jail project would be using part of that building. Then that information will be brought back to the court. It's not only an opportunity to purchase eight acres, which is about 25% of downtown Harson. It would also secure the future for the, the park for the future and the land there. So we'll be, I'll be updating you as time goes on as to, as to how that's, that's going forward. I will say that the price of the two lots across from the jail were, were hard to negotiate. And that's one of the reasons we looked at the holder property. Any questions?
Would there be help for looking just tearing down the warehouse and starting?
You mean the older part of the warehouse? That, that would be a possibility, but that building is really well built. And, and the options, the options we would have in the other part of that building are, are just incredible. As far as what you could do with the rest of the building. We, the sheriff and I see as an opportunity that could very well be a once in a lifetime opportunity. And if that property gets away from us. It would be a great loss to the county. So I, I see, I see it as part of the jail project and not just as a purchase. A side purchase, I see it done in coordination with the jail project and included in the cost of the jail. Yes, sir.
Is there a timeline on that? How it might have been?
We, we exercise a six month option with the option to extend it another six months. So it'll give us plenty of time. I will say that our architect has done at least two other buildings, two other jails where they worked with an existing building. And he said both those projects were very successful. It, the new part of that building is, is really big. And it would give us the opportunity to do a lot of things with the, the, the the potential there to do a lot of things is, is very exciting to me and the sheriff as well. So we'll be, we'll report going forward. I'll have some other things to report to the court next week, but I'll move on and we'll do. We'll do committee and board reports. Be no appointments at this time. I'm talking to a couple of people who've, who've expressed interest in the, the vacancy on the planning commission. But I haven't gotten an answer from one back yet, so we'll wait. Under resolutions, resolution 2023 24793 ECD road names. We'll deal with that then. Resolution 2023 25794 medical training assistance. We're going to talk about that tonight or?
That is up to the committee.
Committee, you want to discuss that? Emergency committee. Okay, that'd be great.
This is just a program that's already been in place. We put it in place last year, the previous mission did. Only, I mean, correct me, 27,000, sorry, 27,000 is what's left.
I believe it's a 24,000 because two people have taken advantage of that program.
Okay. I heard of that one year, that's the news. So in the, my committee decided to open this up to volunteers, not just employees of the ambulance service, how it was set up for, but this one now includes volunteers of fire rescue. And then the committee also decided that they wanted to open it up to all residents of Provo.
And I might add to that, that, that not only would that give us opportunities to have more EMTs and who could move on to advanced EMT. But hopefully they encourage some to, to become paramedics in the county. Okay. Under ordinances, ordinance 290, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
One, one way on this one. After the recent sort of meeting, uh, I'm with Mr. Bugmaster from the part of our community and that there were a couple of volunteers that would be interested in taking part in this, that live in May County counties and, and, and this raised that they would, they would be, they'd be eligible for this.
They are volunteers, then yes, they will. Okay. Yeah. No matter where they live, if they're volunteer for rescue, for fires, then they will.
Okay, I want to answer that.
Very good. Anyone else on that? Sorry about that. I get to move. Yes.
Does he agree that we would take our volunteers first before loading up to all, so they build it up?
He doesn't want to.
Question.
I have a question for the committee. Uh, that's a big issue number one. What about the issue with personnel policies that's applied? It doesn't apply to the citizens of Trousers County. Uh, and as the issue of funding has been thought through, because there's only so many slots available. What happens when you get some folks that are not in the pecking order that, that? How does that work? Now, I want part of this. So I'm, I'm trying to ask the question here.
And I would defer to you and your opinion on that. I don't know.
I think it needs to go back to the emergency service committee to answer those questions.
Okay. And I would just hesitate to do that just because there's two volunteers in the class currently that I would really like to be able to pay for if we can get this passed.
Okay.
If we could amend that, can you talk about how to amend that? Maybe you and I can get together tomorrow and talk about it and come back with something.
The volunteers issue, I don't have the issue with. I'm just concerned about opening up countywide to all citizens. That's my, my biggest concern right now. And, and the funding mechanism for it, because you don't have a priority of who you want to pick between your citizenry versus your, or I mean, you, if you, you can always pass it without that provision in it and then come back to it from emergency services to clarify.
Funding wise, it's just that maybe this thing money that's from part of that's there. And then later on, when the budget comes up, we're gonna put a line item in for rescue and fire. If we want to continue it, if the funds get defaulted.
My biggest objections.
John, John talking.
I think you made that least limited a little bit. That issue regarding the citizens, we can always come back to it, but let's, let's. I think you need to have a little bit more clarity in that particular piece of legislation. I, I think you could send it back and get that a little more answers to that question of priority. Volunteers preferred over citizens first, because they're already operating under our personnel policy. And I've got to think that through a little bit in more detail about how that affects particularly with personnel policy, because our, our, our volunteers are under, under the umbrella of our personnel policy. Trousers County citizens are not.
And I, I, the letter of intent that's also attached to this was sort of, I thought our way around that because it was the the person receiving the scholarship saying, yes, I can pass the personnel and the, he messaged her saying, yes, I will hire you. And so if they can't have personnel, then they have to pay back whatever they.
And that may very well do it. Uh, it, it could very well do that, but it still doesn't, it still doesn't get the issue of the trial to answer.
And plus I have to think up that.
That's funny. Let's all go back to the camp. Or engine recommendation. A little bit, like sure that we're doing now and I'm going to bring down next week or later bring it. You can, you can steer past it, but let's, let's come to look at it a little more and I can get there.
Mr. Beller is going to look at this between now and next week and, and and make some adjustments or amendments to it to make it worse. Yes, sir.
We can amend this one to nine.
Absolutely. And it doesn't kill the original intent. It just, you need to it needs some more work, workmanship that I know.
Very good. Any other questions? Under, yes, sir.
Because of the, um, the immediate use of the two volunteers who are already signed up class being wide, we're kind of pushing this toward. We can amend it next month too. I mean, once it's in place, I mean, this is a year old road and amending, it's just really, and it's easily amended.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll go to ordinances, ordinance 295 2023 32 to amend personnel policy. As it relates to nepotism, Will, would you like to address that please?
I'll do my best. Personnel committee, committee met on this. And forgive me about misspeaking. The item three there was left, was in our original personnel policy. The personnel policy that we currently, currently use that we voted on last year, put into place. This particular paragraph was not in the new policy and this this ordinance, uh, the intent is to add that item three back to the existing policy.
And we will address that at the commission. Moving on to the next one, ordinance 296 2023 33. We amend the zoning resolution section 5.045. We've got some other speakers. David or Commissioner Thomas, would you address that please?
This is an ordinance that came out of zoning, it's on private land. This is actually the Giedem County, um, ordinance that they have on their way to me now probably great, great, great consultant on doing our lovely ordinance. He passes along to me at my request. So they come from both committees. Planning one of the definitions added, uh, so we ended up doing that also. This is not, to my knowledge, any industry, you know, willing to come in. This is a simple fact from the year that I joined the planning commission. We were doing a continuing head course and found out that Trousers County has zero regulations on adult entertainment in this industrial. None. Not the states, because we never opted into the slates of regulations. There are none. Any commercial zoning, any of these entities could go into that the way it's intended by a change. This does not stop any entity from coming into Trousers County because that is illegal. But it would give us some sort of regulation to manage where it would be delivered. This particular one, um, both committees agreed that the M1 general industrial would be preferred for this type of business. And so that is why it's before you can this month's full commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. Someone else? Any questions on that? Under budget amendments. Chairman Gully, would you bring that before? What we're going to be discussing?
So you have a couple of budget amendments tonight. You have 10101, which is senior citizen grant. Uh, and some reserves funding there being used, one reserve funding is being used in personal building as you see. The, uh, any questions on that? If not, 10102, uh, which is county clerk, office equipment, $186. There are some needs that opposite move over a few more items. This is also coming out of their reserve funds. You also have added, um, uh, it is, you should have received an email, I believe, um, 10103, which is a, um, grant of $20,000 for the election commission. Like I said, that's 10103, uh, $20,000 for the election commission for the purchase of computer equipment is what it says. Any questions there? Uh, next one, 118 ambulance services, PR admissions. This is not an addition to the ambulance service fund. It is to the 118 there in this case. This is just money that is setting in unhired physicians. It's being put in to a line item, what PR and marketing be paid through. Any question on that? Next one we have is 14101. You do not have this in the packet. It is a school security grant. I think we all seen the email on it as well today. I apologize. You will receive it very soon and I'm sure it just came in today. 141, it is a school security grant. Uh, it is, um, being used for maintenance of plant, uh, $56,497.55 from public school security grant for physical plant safety upgrades. Any questions there?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will address any notaries, uh, next Monday night. Under other business, Mr. Beller, you're going to address a water sewer issue tonight or you will address that then?
I'll go ahead and tell them tonight, give them a trailer to it. Tommy McFarland called me late last week with regard to a piece of litigation that the, the utility board really needs the authority from this body to engage in a contract with a law firm to sign a retainer agreement. Simply put, it's, it's basically a, it's a lawsuit. It's not a class action lawsuit, but it's a multi-plaintiff lawsuit over multiple districts. That allows for all utilities to register and recover any current and projected future expenses for testing, treatment, remediation due to PFAS contamination. When a settlement is reached. It is not a punitive action, but it's a cost recovery item. I'm not sure all the details of it could enlighten more than I can. Uh, there's no timeline for the settlement. But the, I did speak with, uh, the attorney for the board and Michael wants, he indicated that they need the authority. So next week, just needs to be a motion and it's, it needs to be reflected in the minutes to allow them to enter into that retainer agreement. There's no cost to us. Uh, there's no, uh, upfront money or anything of that nature. It's based on a contingency basis. The attorneys would receive 25% of any gross settlement that they would, that they was attending. And there's only quite a number of lawsuits. Oh, of, of plaintiffs that have already signed up for this piece of litigation.
Thanks, sir. Any question? Okay, uh, I'm 13 is, uh, in our, our meeting on Monday night. We'd ask for public comment. Yes, sir.
I'll go bring up that and public will have a meeting Wednesday night. He's going to bring it up again, discuss it. Out at the, uh, up here to convenience center and out at PVA or the car. There's a bill of pallet of bricks that people have paid money to put out front. They took up a bunch when they had done this road and they're out here at the convenience center. But I understand out at the, out there, there's a pallet of brand new bricks still wrapped in plastic. And so what, so we didn't kind of.
With people's names on them. I think that's an issue we certainly need to bring to, to a cliff's attention and, and see what the future of that, what the plan is.
Okay.
I think that'd be good. Any other comments tonight? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, uh, one just wanted to remind everybody that the, uh, open house, we meet Monday evening, uh, 6:30. Then we just make sure any, you know, anybody public, they'll come and say, people, you know, take it out, see what we did. Reopening and doing that or freaking close because of pre-natured, we not having these things on this duty. We'd love to have a meeting on what, that our values does come out. Anything, and I want to ask you how, on the edge of Mr. Beller, if there was any update on the appeal from the floor in calls.
No, sure. Uh, right now. Appeal has been filed, but there's time constraints. It's been a long time since I've done a Florida appellate work. It's you'll have 30 days to file a brief, the appellate will, and normally that gets extended. And then you have a reply brief from the Apple League, which is us. And then there'll be even a reply brief to that. So we could, I would briefs may be in by the end of the year. Uh, it's not set for oral argument. I wouldn't think it would be until sometime next year would be my, my thought process. I'm getting the bills though from the, the law firm and so just just saying.
Anything else tonight? Yes, ma'am.
So I headed out some of the news gala pamphlets. It's information on what exactly the news gala is this year. They're focusing on, um, the front of some of the buildings downtown and I believe lights and Christmas decorations. So there will be a news gala on October 28th. Um, the information I gave you is for sponsorship. Um, I am over the silent auction. So that's really not my goal. But, um, do you guys have any client auction items that you want to donate to the news gala? Let me know.
Thank you. Anything else? Not only a tiny motion to adjourn?
Mr. Beller, uh, and I talked after the, uh, meeting the other night of our finance meeting, and I appreciate the commission to rate it come out. In that discussion of the pro tax referendum, I would say in the order, resolution. And the reason I'm bringing up now is in discussion with Mr. Beller. It seemed that night, there was quite a bit of discussion on which way it needed to go. And that's different in which way it needs to be written up. So, uh, something this commission really needs to think about is, is are we looking to move this as a commission or are we looking to move this as a commission to referendum? I stated in my opinion, you know, that I'm a referendum. But it seems there's a lot of discussion there. Um, it's something we need to give it's direction on in what direction we would like him to, to move. May not be the perfect time of that conversation, but maybe something to think about a little bit. There's a lot of discussion there. You know, in, in discussion, it doesn't look like we would make a march by any means for that, that piece. We're kind of running out of time for us there in that case. Maybe possible, but it would be very tight. Uh, it requires, um, as by resolution of commission, it requires a simple majority. Once, twice.
Consecutive meeting.
Two consecutive meetings. Give that one forward. Uh, we can move it by a simple majority referendum. And then it's in the voter states or where we want it. You know, it's, um, we know there's pending costs coming. We're talking about entering into an agreement already on this jail that's coming our way. We know those pending costs are headed our, our way. We have some decisions made. How that funding is going to be there. I personally have not had any negative conversations about the wheel tax. I think people feel it to be very fair, uh, every conversation I've had. But I think there's a, a, a good plan in place, uh, for a lot of those pieces. There may be no, no, not much of pieces, but I think it's very close to a, a pretty strong plan. We need to make some pretty hard decisions on those pieces in a, in a time frame to be ready to move it before we move it. Like I said, March looks to be getting further and further away from us in making that happen. It would have to be passed before October 4th to get it to, uh, election commission.
Is there any reason we can set something and attempt to get it passed by them? Instead of the, kind of living in. I talked with several constituents and requested everyone else to do a sport. And one said, I am for as long as there's going to be criminal justice in the, and this was another man who's interested. Someone who does not involved in criminal justice. I have a farm, but everyone's very positive. My thought was to vote how at the meeting.
So at that meeting, it was, it was an open discussion that night. So that was, that was framed around getting this discussion moving in that direction. I think the discussion stayed entirely around the discussion that was being presented, the 40 to 4020 on that breakdown. With satellites, fire stations being a huge part of it. And the, the reason for that 20% jail funding in 40% and capital, I think it's usually that really on smoothness for that to come our way.
With no sunset, right?
At this point, there was a, a, another sunset discussion in that meeting. I think it's very difficult to put a sunset on what we're just going to be going for. We don't even have a, an exact cost that we need all day. We didn't know we have a key call heading our way. I'm here, we'll find out a, a cost of what property here at some point in time. So it's, it's really, this is what we should, whatever we want to do. If you're to the state, it is a new tax, we're going to have to do with.
And, um, I think we need to put it on an agenda for everyone to be a committee.
If I.
Well, it's not, but, uh, but I think we need to press this forward very quickly. And I would like to know, I'm for us voting on putting the platform against it, and not take in going to litigation. I've discussed that with you and you're the other one. I would like to know, I think we all should know the pros and cons of that. And, and let's make a decision, go forward as quickly as possible.
How many signatures will we need for a good referendum?
I think it's 10% of the last gubernatorial election. And you know, that's always the big ticket item right there. You pointed, hit the nail on the head. I mean, it is. You know, one of two vehicles, this body can make the decision and you can send it straight to referendum, one or two. If you, if you and everybody's going to have a different viewpoint on that, but I think that's one of the first questions that I need to have answered. What do you, what? What vehicle do you want to, do you want to go with? Do you want to go with sending it straight to referendum? And then again, when you send it to referendum, you have to be very clear about what it's for. Right now the discussions centered around a jail capital outlay reserve. That 40% of the wheel tax would go to fund that. The, uh, the educational capital outlay reserve. 40% would go to fund that. And then the, the third piece of that was a ambulance satellite. I'm going to call it reserve, the balance of 20%. So of those three that you have right now, you've got one active project right now, which is the jail that is being discussed. And we should be narrowing down the, what the projected cost of that project will be. We're already getting there with the land option that we've got right there. So it's just a matter of just.
Another option, we got to figure out how much money, a hundred dollars, what we've been discussing with somebody on the tax law. And I, I received it, I asked a hundred dollars, what's this? So it's 40, 40, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I've talked to several people about this. And one of the objections I've got is that about sunset. And I've talked to several of them. I say, well, y'all was just giving you, give you a blank check. I said, well, not really. It's, well, that's what it looks like because the other what we read the other night, it said, we, after the jails paid for it. What we read the other night, it, it said, the big, after the jails paid for it, gets redistributed. And that ain't sitting too well with a lot of things. It costs us a lot of votes as we go with that.
As far as the forty percent, forty dollars last time, we have in place.
Any other discussion? Yeah, yes, sir.
I've talked to several folks also, and, yeah, the. The, the concern I've heard have been true for the one, one like this sports that the light of the sun's ahead. If we, if we do send this to referendum, we better have something in there or, you know. I don't know if people are going to go for a indefinite tax, um, and the other concern I've heard is, is if the amount. I prefer to say, well, I don't mind a weak tax, but a hundred dollars. That's gonna be a, that's gonna, we're gonna sell that too. I, I know, I'm, I'm just saying, we're gonna have to do a selling, uh, to, to get people to vote for it, which, uh. You know, and I, I say that, I mean, last week, I, I'd rather see us deal with ourselves. And I, I found it goes to referendum. I'd rather us have two teams that have, have, having it than, than one. And if it's forced to referendum, great, that, that, that's the right beat.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel like we were elected by the people and we need to tell them, we need to vote on this and we need to stand and say what we think needs to happen. If they can then give the petition and it goes to referendum, then that's great. Then it goes to referendum. I think if it could be on the agenda this one as well, so that we can discuss that and get it going.
Yes, sir.
At the same time, the state of Tennessee mandates that Trousers County provide certain services. And there are other services that they don't mandate that we do provide. If the citizens decide that they're not going to give any more tax revenue. Here any other streams of tax revenue, we will have to cut by state law, other services to pay for the mandated services. We won't have a choice.
Yes, sir. In the back, on the left.
Uh, I had a conversation with, uh, my counsel, uh, after the finance meeting here, and he brought up a, a point that it's very valid. Smith County had done a bundle with a, with a sales tax and a fuel tax. Uh, that sales tax piece I keep bringing up is, uh, that money, that, that revenue alone could be skewed. Towards the fire department expansion, allowing a hundred percent of the wheel tax to be spread to. The education portion and jail, which would fund that people. Uh, it, that's something I think we should take a good look at. As a, as a bundle, push them at the same time. Because we're gonna have to come up with this money like, like has been stated more than once. We get one opportunity to do this, it goes to referendum. If it doesn't, so what's our next option? Triple the property taxes? I'll tell you right now, if I pay, I'm out. I, I, I'm not gonna pay to pay. That's, I mean, that's the realistic number. We'll have to nearly triple it to be able to reach our goals financially. So we have to make this happen one way or another. It's not a if, it's this when. This has got to go through.
So the rate is out of town and meeting and day to.
If I had a recommendation to this body, I would tell you to. A meeting of all the commissioners, just a special workshop, just for this wheel tax issue. And these, all these things are maybe big rock to bear, the, the sales tax portion of it, uh. We need to kind of get a, a, a direction. You, you don't have to agree on anything, but you have to have a direction on what you want to do. And I'm, I'm gonna have to follow your instructions, however that is. And so, uh, we've been throwing pieces out, just kind of different ideas, but they're, they're starting to, to refine themselves a bit. And I think it would be great to have a special session just for that, that issue. And I think, and, and it may not be, get done in one session.
Yes.
I would like to know why, and, and it's mainly the end that may. To, it seems to me that us passing and then if they, if a population wants to. Uh, vote to vote, that seems the most logical to me. In your opinion, why would it be more logical to go straight to a vote?
I don't know that it's a legal opinion as much as it is, just it may be almost a, a jaded pessimism that it's gonna go to referendum regardless. We want an honest answer.
Yeah.
Mr. Paul.
One other thing I think you did bring, a lot of the senior packages, I don't have any read it. Just pipeline deals, they move it fast. They got one more, and then the pipelines come to them. And they're a lot of money to Trousers County. We're gonna run it off.
Well, I think they kind of told us that really, don't y'all see chickens on that line? I think she needs to put this case really together, she.
They, they told us not to plan on that, but, but that's certainly an ace in the hole. That's, that's money that may be there. Uh, let, let me just say this. I, I think it's very important. How this is rolled out or presented to the public. And if we can say, this is what your money is going to buy. And the public can see exactly what's coming. And, and presented in such a way to, to make it attractive to what the people in this county want. I think it has a very good chance of, of passing. Yes, sir.
Question from Mr. Beller, if we did a, a bundle with the sales and wheel, like, like, chances product. We, 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 we put a, a sales tax referendum in twenty twenty. Same as I'm thinking, it had to be on a, on a general election for some reason. Would we be able to put it on? A market call if, if that was the route we.
I've, I've been focusing exclusively on wheel tax, but, uh, I'll give an answer for that. But you may very well be right that it has to go on a general election, but I'll double check.
Anyone else?
Yes, we can set a date.
We can set a date, but I, I suppose we'd have to do that Monday night, would we not? Yeah, we can discuss it tonight and, and agree on setting a date on Monday, next Monday night. Anything else? Not all entertaining motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.